Good evening. I hereby call to order this regular meeting for the Board of Education for Willmet Public School District 39 for today's date. Will the Secretary please take the roll call?
Thank you, President Patel. Over the past fifty years, the League of Women Voters of Willmet has worked with eighth grade students throughout Willmet to provide the opportunity to learn about the workings of local government. Students have worked closely with representatives from the boards of the Village, the Library, the Park District, and our 2K through eighth grade school boards, District 37 and District 39, to understand firsthand how they function. Today, students from District 39 will conduct a mock, a mock meeting of the District 39 Board of Education. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Willmet, I would like to thank all of the District 39 staff, especially Eric Rieses and Erin Schors, as well as all the members of the District 39 Board and Superintendent Lechner for making the League's Student and Government Leaders Program possible. Thank you.
Good evening. I hereby call to order this regular meeting for the Board of Education for the Willmet Public School District 39 for Wednesday, February twentieth, twenty nineteen. Will the Secretary please take the roll call?
President Patel. Vice President Achimovic.
Here.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Dobek.
Present.
Trustee Herman.
Here.
Trustee Nemirofsky.
Here.
Trustee Achedu.
Here.
Trustee Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Hayden.
Here.
Trustee Farkas.
Here.
We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. You have received the minutes from the January meeting. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
I motion to approve these minutes.
I second that motion.
Will the people with board presentations please present?
Good evening. My name is Amelia Dobek, and I will be speaking of the CRC meeting that met on February thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The CRC discussed the best personalized learning plans and new method of attendance in school, remote learning days. Wednesday and Thursday, January thirtieth and thirty first, were dangerously cold, but instead of moving two full days of learning to the summer, students had their own classrooms right at home with remote learning. Remote learning became possible when Illinois lawmakers gave school districts the power to decide what counts as a school day in two thousand seventeen. The schools that turned to remote learning included Willmet School District Thirty Nine, Glencoe School District Thirty Seven, Avoca School District Thirty Five, and Libertyville School District Seventy. The Illinois School Code used to define a school day as a minimum of five days under supervision, but it did now change to whatever the school district thinks promotes learning and growth. Students completed projects, worksheets, and even educational games, all of which, all of which definitely go into a category of growth or learning. Since it was too cold, wind chills to the negative fifties, students would be stuck inside anyway. Instead of risking the well-being of students to attend school or by leaving two days to be made up at the start of summer, e-learning provides an educational and growth-promoting solution. As we know, almost, almost nobody likes to spend two days of their precious summer in school, as residents from Highland Park, Highwood, and Fort Sheridan proved when they asked the school district to use holidays instead of summer days. Students found e-learning an interesting twist to the usual school day and the work to be both educational and inspiring. Illinois lawmakers are actually current, currently trying to reverse the bill that was set in place in two thousand seventeen. The meeting was on February sixth, two thousand and nineteen. The bill is backed by education unions, but many school districts support the old bill due to its positive outcome on students with e-learning. The decision now awaits the House. Just like State Representative Don Swanson said, "Districts have benefited from allowing e-learning during bad weather." Not only have school districts benefited, but the students have made growth and raised their abilities on days where they would have stayed home and otherwise not increased their cerebral capability. Thank you.
We will now hear the administrative plans for the kindergarten enrichment program.
Hello, my name is Natalie Fisher, and I am the superintendent here at District Thirty Nine. We are here to present on the, the plans for the kindergarten enrichment. The topic at hand is, is it feasible for District Thirty Nine to offer a sustainable, fee-oriented kindergarten enrichment option that lasts a whole school day?
Hello, my name is Tammy Jesuson, and I am the standing principal here at WJHS, and I'm here to present about how enrichment will affect the lives of students. So, to get us started, I want to take a step back and talk a little bit about child development. Now, this may seem like an abstract concept, but it actually plays a significant role in what we are trying to do here with kindergarten enrichment. So, children have been analyzed for years, and we as a society have come to a conclusion that the chunk of child development happens between five and six years old. This includes physical, emotional, mental, and social development. Now, with child enrichment, we would be focusing on the social and emotional development. Take, keep in mind that the kindergartners who participate in the enrichment program do not have an academic advantage over those who do not participate.
Hello, I am Lauren Gallagher, and I am the Assistant Principal here at WJHS. To get a perspective, we selected two focus groups to analyze the working of kindergarten enrichment on the other school districts like ours who have started this enrichment program already. The first was that, that was the Gardner School Districts. Administrators report that their kindergarten enrichment programs help children build additional skills, bring about healthy challenges, and kickstart physical development. In addition to that, positive reports were also given from Batavia Park District in Batavia, Illinois, who said that enrichment relieves the students' stress of being graded. On top of that, students are faced with interactive environments that encourage more social learning. Any questions?
How were the focus groups selected for the schools?
We don't know. We'll have to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kendall Hong. We believe that special needs students would benefit greatly from a kindergarten enrichment program. This is because special needs students often miss class for sessions with a social worker or other specialist. A full-day kindergarten enrichment program would allow them to be able to spend more time with their peers. During this time, they could socialize, make new friends, et cetera. Their peers would benefit as well because they would get to know the special needs students and learn more about their needs. While the student with a disability would benefit from the social interaction, additional funds to pay paraprofessionals would need to be allotted by the district fund slash tuition. Are there any questions?
Hello, my name is Akiva Sharon. With the creation of kindergarten enrichment, we would have to hire new teachers, paraprofessionals, and staff. As well, teachers would work more hours, which would require a renegotiation of salaries and such with the teachers' unions. The teacher's salary would also need to be paid, presumably by the funds gained from the student's tuition. New and old teachers would also need to agree to the longer and possibly more active hours that they would work with this enrichment program. New training would be implemented for the enrichment program based on educational programming and curriculum. Any questions?
How much would this cost?
I'm not totally sure. I can get back to you on that.
Hello, my name is Kate Parkill. All curriculum requirements set by the state of Illinois will be taught in the first half of the day, while the second half of the day will be dedicated to enrichment activities. With this layout, no child can have an advantage over the other, whether they spend the afternoon at school or at home. And the enrichment part, the enrichment portion of the school day will be oriented, oriented on activities such as science, creative arts, and social activities. The curriculum of the afternoon enrichment program will be laid out by the teachers, allowing the teachers to construct the agenda and the activities that they will assign to their students. Even though the afternoon enrichment is not as vigorous as the morning, it's necessary for there to be structure and to have a general plan or guidelines set on what the kindergartners are allowed to do. And these rules or plans will be set differently based on the teacher and the school's views.
Hi, my name is Bobby O'Keefe, and I'll be talking about educational programming. So, it's essential for this program that we provide structure for the students enrolled. While this, while its time is mostly non-educational, we need to provide our students with engaging activities. So, these could be science experiments, art activities, hands-on activities, music, creative writing, sharing, outdoor activities, physical activities, kind of building off that, and free reading time. And none of these activities will give any of our enrolled students an advantage over those who are not. And also, oh. And we also need to look to lunch. So, we don't know what times would fit in with the schools, but that is a necessary component of the day that we would need to look at for this, getting more funds to pay for the lunch items and such. Thank you.
Would for lunch, would these kids be eating in the cafeteria, or would they have to bring their own lunch from home?
The schools would have to figure that out. We, we couldn't say, well, eat in the cafeteria, eat in the classroom.
Are there any statistics to show how the enrichment affects the students in the future?
I don't know. I don't know about that, Kate.
We'll have to get back to you, to you on that, at least not at the moment, as we haven't been doing this program in the, in the past.
Thank you.
How will this affect their development in the future?
Um, we're not totally sure on that. As we, this is just a new program, but as Tammy was saying, child development is very important in early age. So, we're not really sure. We'll have to get back to you, with you on that.
So, since we have the Park District in this area, why are we thinking about making the enrichment program for the kindergartners? Because like Bobby was saying, that they would be doing music, they would be doing art, science experiments. I mean, this is what the Park District does for the kindergartners right now?
That's true. You just have to fill the time. It needs to be structured. We need to have some way to tell our students, this is what we're doing today. We need a, we need a goal. While the Park District may do those things, we still need that structure.
And also, it's much easier instead of having the students stay at the school for the enrichment than having to go to the Park District. And for parents that work full day, that can't get their child to the Park District, having the option at school is much easier for them. Any other questions?
How much more money would be needed for lunch?
We're not totally sure on that.
Hello, my name is Sophia, and I'm the business manager, so I will be presenting on the budgeting, funding, and resources. Our recommendation overall to, for the board is to build classroom extensions for each of the elementary schools. For construction, we plan on splitting it into two phases. In the first phase, we will build in Central and Harper before continuing to the second phase, where we plan on building in Ramona and in McKenzie. For the funding plan, we recommend to have the parents pay for the construction fee over the course of ten years, in addition to the original program cost to sustain the program. For the classroom extensions, each elementary school will have to get new resources in order to create a suitable learning environment for each, for the kids. We would need to install new heating and AC appliances, hire new teachers and assistants, and add furniture such as toys, chairs, tables, carpeting, et cetera, or any other supplies that would help in creating a child-friendly area suitable for learning. We have two funding options. In option A, we have the parents pay only for the tuition fee of the program, while the district covers the total cost of the construction. This would sum up to four thousand one hundred forty-five dollars per student for any of the construction plans. In option B, the parents would cover the cost of both the construction and the basic cost of the program. In this option for the classroom extension, the construction fee is two thousand three hundred forty-four dollars. For the modular fee, fee plan paid off over five years, it would be one thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars. Those would be the only construction fees, not, not including the program fee of one four thousand one hundred forty-five. This graph here represents funding option A, where the parents only pay the program fee. The blue line represents the operating funds without the kindergarten program. The green represents the operating funds with the classroom extension plan, and the red, the operating funds with the modular that would be paid off over five years. Here, the green line drops suddenly and will continue to drop as time goes on. The red line stays relatively close to the standard assumption operating fee, but will eventually separate as time goes on as well. This graph shows funding option B, where the parents assume the cost of the construction and the program. Similar to the previous graph, the blue shows the operating funding balance without any kindergarten enrichment. The green shows it with the classroom extension plan, and the red represents it with the modular plan paid over five years. At first, once again, the green line drops immediately, while the red stays in line with the standard assumption at the beginning. Though later on, the red line will part ways as the modular will need repairing or replacements, while the green line will go up as the district pays off the construction fee over ten years. After comparing these two options, the board recommends following option B's funding plan. With the current plan, the sum of building the extension estimates to around five million dollars. When accounting all other factors like the salary of teachers and annual maintenance costs, the pred, the predicted fee parents will pay would be around six thousand five hundred dollars. This fee would include the construction paid over ten years and enrichment program fee itself for a one hundred seventy-six day program. With this fee, the operating funds balance can be kept about thirty percent. Any questions?
Off of this project, are you planning on making any profit?
The goal of the board is not to make a profit, but to make the program self-sustaining. I think it'd be better for it to be a choice for the parents, since not everyone living in the district actually has a child that's able to participate in this program.
Approximately, how, how long will it take to build these new classrooms?
I don't have that information right now. I'll get back to you.
Would any money be gained from this program?
With the current plan, after ten years, all of the money would be paid off for the construction. So, yes, money would be gained from it, I guess.
For the kindergarten enrichment, would it be more money to pay for that, or for the parents to have a babysitter for half of the day?
I don't have those statistics. I'll get back to you on that.
Would these constructions change students that are not in kindergarten, like their educational aspect of their days?
I don't believe so, taking account into the High Crest Building being renovated and having construction there. I don't think their education is being affected, I guess.
Would you having to do more construction, do you know how that would affect the neighbors or the people that are living right next to the school, especially in Harper, because the houses are right there next to the school?
I don't know how it would actually affect the neighbors, but I'm sure the architects have a plan to ensure that no housing or other families would be affected. Any other questions?
Hello, I'm Mason Yanover, the Director of Technology in D39. If we were to do kindergarten enrichment, it would be important to integrate technology into it, because if we teach kids how to use technology at a young age, they'll know how to use it their whole lives. And students will most likely bore more, be more engaged in school by technology and have more fun. Personalized learning for our students can be utilized via technology, so they can learn what they want to learn during enrichment time. We can begin to teach students how to use technology responsibly and appropriately, and most likely will, we will use smart boards for enrichment purposes along with computers. These costs will be built into the financing. I will not be taking questions. Presented by Akiva, Sharon, Mason Yanover, Bobby O'Keefe, Skylar Cox, Catherine Parco, Sophia Wang, Kendall Hong, Tammy, Lauren Gallagher, and Natalie Fisher.
That was our presentations. Are there any further more questions for the presenters?
How much more money would it cost to add technology into the kindergarten enrichment?
Mason, do you have any? We do not know yet. We will get back to you.
Thank you.
This question is for the principal. So, how would having a full-day kindergarten, how would this affect your job, working with the kids, and also working just around and in your job?
Can you repeat that question?
How would having a full day of kindergarten with the enrichment affect your job?
What do you mean, how so? As in, how I'm interacting with the students?
Yeah, how you're interacting with them, and then also the workload that you're gonna have.
I do not presently know that information. I'll get back to you if I can.
Do you think construction might be affected by small businesses near the schools?
At the moment, there are full-day grades at both the schools, and the small businesses around it aren't affected, so I know. But if anything comes out, we will like.
Thank you. I have a question for the superintendent. Why would we change half-day kindergarten if it's been working for so many years?
Well, we have gotten information on parents that they're, they, working parents, like certain fam, a lot of families in the area have, both parents work full day, and so they have to hire a nanny or pay for them to go to a different area and keep learning. While if we provide this program for them, the parents will be able to pay for the kids to stay in school for longer, therefore giving them the option not to pay for a nanny all day or anything like that. So, just for conveniences for the parents and such.
Do you know if the cost for the enrichment, if that's better than going to the Park District and signing up for those classes?
I think the enrichment is definitely cheaper than the Park District. I know you definitely couldn't get at the Park District the services you could with the enrichment program.
How so?
I think the enrichment program provides a wide variety of services, so like outdoor activity, art, science, stuff like that. Anything else?
Has there been a survey for how many more parents would keep their students in, their kids in school if there was an enrichment program? We do not currently know that information.
Have you guys been able to talk with the parents and just get like an overall assumption before you do it about who would want to do it?
There was a survey done beforehand, and many parents reacted positively, positively saying that they would like an enrichment program to be put in place for their kids.
Have you talked to kids about their thoughts on full-day versus half-day?
I'll keep in mind that the students being affected by this are five and six-year-olds and younger, the ones that will be going through the program. So, most of them do not, like, it's mostly for, the kids will be benefiting, but at the moment, because they're very young, it's hard to talk to them and get their opinions professionally on this.
How would the residents of Willmet be affected by this new program, which are the residents that are not parents?
Well, because the parent, it's going to be paid for only by the people who would like to use the program, they will most like, most likely not be affected unless they are very near the school vicinity and will hear the construction. But other than that, it should only affect the people choosing to do the program and teachers.
How long is the construction supposed to take?
I believe this answer, this question was asked before. We do not know. I will get back to you on this.
This is for the administrator for students in special services. How would the increased amount of students with disabilities affect your job?
The fact that there are more students in the district with disabilities means that we need to hire more paraprofessionals and other, and other specialists to help them deal with their disability.
Approximately, how, how much would staffing be for, for the new extensions?
I mean, we can't exactly know that until like we meet with the unions, because I'm, it's not totally up to us. We have to discuss it with them. We have to discuss it with the teachers. But I would hope it's not too much. Around how many hours do students with special needs lose, well, not lose, but not have in the classroom with social workers?
We don't know the answer. I will get back to you.
Thank you.
This is for the Assistant Superintendent in Human Resources. Do you think you would be able to find enough people to want to fill this job?
I think that we will. And I mean, Willmet is definitely, I think, a more ideal place to teach. And also, hopefully, we can get a lot of the teachers to work additional hours, so that we won't have to hire more teachers and train them.
Have half-day kindergarten teachers shown an interest in working for the full day?
I mean, I'm, I'm not totally sure. I would imagine that some don't want to work more hours, but they also will get an increased pay, so it's a trade-off.
Does anybody on the board want to discuss these points? Does anybody on the board want to discuss these points? Do I have a motion to vote on the kindergarten enrichment program?
I move to vote on the enrichment program for kindergartners.
I second.
Those in favor? Do, do we have questions from the community?
Hi, I'm Skylar Cox, a woman parent of two. My oldest is in kindergarten right now and the other is in preschool. I think it would be extremely beneficial to create an in-school enrichment opportunity. The half-day of kindergarten forces me to only work half a day. Also, most of the country offers full-day kindergarten. If we were to have a full-day kindergarten, the cost of the program would be minuscule to the amount of money that a full-day job offers. In addition, the kids would get more time to learn social skills with their peers. Most families these days have two working parents to support the cost of living in this type of neighborhood. Thanks for listening.
For your older child, does he or she use the Park District, or do you use the Park District as a resource?
Uh, no, I just take them home every day.
Have you considered using the Park District as a resource?
Uh, I have, but I just don't like the option as much as just leaving them at school the whole day.
Uh, but how many other states require that, that you have to have a full day for kindergarten?
Answer to that question, but I'll get back to you on that.
Those in favor of passing this say a. All those opposed say nay.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
I second.
This meeting has officially been adjourned.